I will call to order regular session of the Grand City Council Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. Happy Cinca de Mayo to everyone. And just a statement that we are, all councilors are participating via electronic communications. And with that, I would like to have a roll call, please.
Steve Clement?
Here.
Gary Lillard? Gary Lillard?
Looks like he's locked up. Nope, he's moving, but not much.
Well, okay, Gary is here.
Yes.
John Bozarth is absent, excuse David Glebe?
Here.
Nicole Howard?
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner?
There.
Justin Rock?
All right, thank you.
If you noticed, I was here also.
Yes, we got you. Thank you.
Having a little trouble.
Let us know if you need any assistance, Gary. Okay, I do just make a note that there were some minor changes to one of the council action forums. I caught that on a read-through, but so did the city manager's office staff found it. And I'll be using the revised version. I'm assuming otherwise the agenda is fine. We have a consent agenda which consists of the regular session minutes for the April meeting. And I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
That's it.
Before we take a vote, Robert, do I recall correctly that there were some minor changes to the minutes as well? From the packet that we were sent or I thought I'm when I was at City Hall the other day talking to Stacy. She said there might have been some minor changes. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of that. Stacy's on, so she can respond to that.
So there was some resolution numbers that when we sent out the first draft, the resolution numbers were duplicated from the last two meetings, I believe is what happened. So what I did is I just changed the numbers. Sandra changed the numbers on the actual physical copies and initial Denver kilos request. So what we have now is the printed copies that I am going to give to Steve to sign are right. They are the correct copies.
Okay, that's all I needed to know then. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Here.
Yes or no, Gary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. John Bozarth is absent, excuse David Glebe?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Robert, public comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We didn't get any requests for anything to be included in public comments, but I did want to make the council aware that I received one phone call. I attempted to return it, but it was unsuccessful, left a message. And I did get two emails on the contact us online expressing concern about the extension of the city's emergency declaration. I responded back and explained first and foremost that the emergency declaration is not putting any additional restrictions or requirements on the city. We're not adding to anything that the governor's office is doing. That this is just a mechanism that allows us to take action quickly and that we've extended the emergency declaration each time that the governor's office has done that and will continue to do so. The things that we have used that authority to do is it allows us to be able to accept federal funds if they become available for communities that have declared an emergency. So that flexibility is good. The only action that I can think of that we have done relying on that emergency declaration was the decision to just adjust the footprint and the eligibility for the facade program to include all of the urban renewal district for projects that were to add drive-through or walk-up windows as opposed to going through the normal process of having a policy revision. You were made aware of that. The other things that we have done, we didn't need the authority of the emergency declaration. But other things that we've done are set up that emergency loan program to suspend the enforcement of the downtown parking restrictions, to suspend shut-offs and delinquent fees for city services for approximately a year. Those were actions we took in an effort to try to make things easier on the community. And we really haven't used the emergency declaration to do any significant actions. And so it's really, at this point, pro forma to have that. But again, we're not done with the pandemic and we do not know what may occur. And so it's prudent to keep those authorities in there even if we don't exercise them. And hopefully we'll be able to end that sometime in the near future. But I didn't want to make the council aware that I'd received three contacts, people expressing concerns about it. But I think a lot of it is just not understanding what it really means. So, thank you.
So, Robert, let's say we remove the emergency, the declaration of an emergency situation and then additional federal or state dollars become available. Are we at a risk of missing out on those? Or ultimately can we get them as a consequence of everyone getting them?
I don't think we're, I don't, well, so first of all, for the ARPA money that's coming, we're going to get that. That has no bearing on this. FEMA funding, as an example. We have a FEMA grant that is open on COVID. Having an emergency declaration is important for that. And again, it's, it is, it's not that we are saying things have gotten worse. It's just we, the timing of the renewal was, you know, we've done it, what, four or five times? Every two months we've renewed it. But in terms of actually taking any action under that authority, it really has only been the one thing for the facade program.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else for public comments? As I mentioned, Robert and I were speaking this afternoon. One of the things that I've, I'm really missing at this point is is being in council chambers with you and having an opportunity to hear directly from people during the public comment session. It'd be nice when we can get back to that. All right, we have public hearings tonight, one item. And this is the second reading of an ordinance to establish a final assessment for 2019 citywide voluntary city sidewalk local improvement district. The public hearing is open and we had a reading of the rules of order for this public hearing at our regular session in April. And with that, Mr. Carpenter, I need, we need to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, councilors, what you have is the second reading. So this will be, this will actually establish the final assessments for that last sidewalk, I like you, which was 19-64. So if you have any questions, we've been through this a couple of times so far for this one. The first report was approved in March. The first reading was in April. So if you have any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Questions for Kyle?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Kyle, somebody asked me whether or not the sidewalk would include the driveway section. If they didn't have a sidewalk, couldn't they do driveways?
We have done driveways, yes. So we have two bid items. One is for four inch, which we use generally for sidewalks. We also have one that's a six inch that we use for driveways.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know for sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we go any further, just very quickly, I have the participants listing open if you have questions. And I don't see you raising your hand. You can, you can flag me there, so I'll be watching that. If there are no other council questions, discussion? These LIDs are one of those things that seem pretty straightforward. They are. Public Works does a good job putting it together, contacting landowners, providing a service at a good, a good cost. And we have a nice program now where we're running through the city every seven to eight years with other sidewalks. So it works pretty well. If there are no council and no discussion, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed ordinance establishing final assessment for the 2019 citywide voluntary sidewalk local improvement district number 19-064 be read by title only for the second time put to a vote and adopted.
Second.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Additional comments or discussions? If not, could I have a reading in the ordinance for a second time by title only?
An ordinance for the city council of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, establishing the final assessments of the property determined to be specifically benefited by the 2019 citywide voluntary sidewalk local improvement district number 19-064 and declaring an effective date.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second, and we have had a reading. Roll call, vote, please.
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozarth is absent, excuse David Glebe?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We have no unfinished business. We have three items of new business. The first of which is, ta-da, another citywide sidewalk local improvement district. And so, Mr. Carpenter, I believe you're up again.
This is efficient. I didn't even have to turn off my camera. So this new council action is to establish a new sidewalk LID for the 21 year. It is 21-066. So in this LID, we're planning to cover zones one and two. There's a map attached to the council action form that kind of shows you the areas we'll be working on. Those are, if you imagine it, it's pretty much everything south of each avenue. So I'll take any questions you have right now.
Questions for Kyle? All right, Robert, any public testimony on this?
No, Mayor, there was not.
Council discussion? A motion? Motion from somebody?
I move that we establish the 2021 citywide voluntary sidewalk local improvement district number 21-066.
Second.
Additional comments, discussion? If not, roll call, vote, please.
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozarth is absent, excuse David Glebe?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item of new business is to consider accepting a certified local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department State Historic Preservation Office. I believe this is for funding to move ahead with establishing some, if I've got that right, I haven't joined, yes, establishing some standards for our historical buildings. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Boquist.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So just to give you some background and for clarification, back in early February, we had a work session with the Landmarks Commission. And then at the February council meeting, the council passed a resolution that authorized staff to apply for a grant from the State Parks Historic Preservation Office. And if awarded, authorized the city manager to sign the contract. During the discussions in February, there were just some concerns. Let me back up. So this grant is for not creating entirely new standards as if we didn't have any standards. We currently have guidelines that were established around 1999 and kind of morphed into becoming standards. But the language has kind of remained in a guidelines kind of terminology that has resulted in some inconsistent decisions over the years. It requires some interpretation and as you have a change in commission members and, you know, unique projects, sometimes those decisions, you know, are viewed differently. And the standard could have been applied differently. And so it's created some conflicts and some frustrations with contractors and property owners. And it's time to update those. And we've been looking at this for probably the past 15 years. But it's finally worked its way up to something that's been, become a priority for the commission. And so they asked you for support in this grant, which requires an equal match. And the grant that we applied for was $10,000. It requires a $10,000 budgeted match for a $20,000 project. And so the council, at least in February, supported the application for that grant. But there were some discussions with mixed feelings about can staff do this on their own? Why do we need to hire a consultant and some of those things? And I've discussed this with the commission and they are still very strongly asking for the grant to move forward because this is not something that we feel that staff or the commission can handle at their volunteer capacity as well as we think that, you know, the city creating rules were kind of a biased party and, you know, in that rulemaking process. And we would like to have an unbiased consultant come in and work with the property owners and developers to establish standards that are workable for everybody without staff and the commission influencing that with their opinion. And so, so anyway, we still, we feel very strongly about moving forward with this. And so your decision tonight is not necessarily to sign anything, but is you ask that this come back to you if we were awarded the grant, which we were. And you ask that we come back and have the conversation with you before we actually accept it and then put it forward through the budget process. So next week, if you support this tonight, next week in the budget hearings, you'll see a request in the planning budget for that matching fund. And then something that's different or deviated from your packet on that grant amount. And this came in relatively late. It's in the contract that we've received that we haven't signed yet. But there were less applicants than the state anticipated. And I think it may be one or two, not very many. But that amounted to an extra $2,000 being awarded to the city that we will not have to budget match dollar for dollar. It just raises our project to $22,000. And we'll be matching that with, with staff labor and commission volunteer labor and just documenting time and just the cost of, you know, going through the process and what we would probably expend out of the budget for, you know, the public hearings and so forth. So anyway, so it's now a $22,000 project, that 12,000 from the state, and then we would match it with 10. And anyway, I just ask you to support it, but I'm here to answer any questions if you have any that I can help with. Gary?
Looks like Gary's got one. Go.
Yeah, how much that 22,000 actually goes to the consultant for services?
The full 22,000 would go to the consultant.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so to give you some information on that, when we did our preliminary work on it, we had a consultant, we had a couple that gave us advice, but one of them actually gave us a lot of information on what it costs to do this kind of work. And we were originally thinking we could do this for 15 to 20,000. And the consultant kind of cringed a little bit, said, yeah, that's going to be kind of hard. You could potentially, you know, these, these projects generally cost between 15 and $30,000. And 15 is on the, on the light side. And we probably wouldn't end up with the product we wanted at that price. And so that's why we kind of landed on 20. And now 22 makes it even better.
So, so Mike, because we have some standards in place, does, does that make the process a little easier for the consultants? You know, you gave us a pretty broad range of 15 to 30K. We're, we're, we're getting the project for 22. Is that because we have, that we have that, that, those standards in place and they're just sort of either reaffirming them or codifying them in some way?
I think partially, you know, that's, that's helping because we already have a draft in place. At least we're looking at it in the, in the context of it being a draft that they're going to be rewriting and providing us new standards. A lot of that cost goes into having a robust public process where a consultant actually comes for at least three meetings with the public. And that's, you know, we don't have consultants here. It's expensive to get a consultant to come here. And, and so that's, that's a lot of the cost is that, that portion of the process. And then the other thing we have is there's going to be a lot of code writing because what our code does not do is it does not differentiate between the different types of historic buildings. We have buildings downtown that are not historic, that are fairly modern. We have some that are historic, but they've been significantly altered. So they have a different value. Anyway, we have four types, you know, from ones that are still great buildings that are on the National Historic Register to those that are modern, but they're all required to conform to the same historic. required to conform to the same historic standards and it it's not equitable and it just doesn't make sense. And so it that's one of the challenges we face. And so the consultant will be rewriting our entire standards, probably using some of what we already have, but considerably changing them so that it addresses the needs of our community better than what our current code does.
Okay. I see that Mary Ann and Dave have their hands up. I don't know which one was first, so I'm going to go um I maybe politically incorrect and say ladies first.
Well, Mike, I was wondering, are the consultants generally from what area? Are they, I mean, are they from a big city? Are they from a small town? There's a big difference between the historic standards in a large city than there is in a small town.
It is, and that that's really important to me and it's important to our commission. And so what we have, uh we we found a consultant that was kind of out of the Bend area, I think kind of in the Redmond, Madras areas where uh that consultant lives and does a lot of uh um projects in rural communities. Um, there's also, most of the consultants are on the west side because that's where the work is. And uh but there's historic districts and little tiny communities throughout the state. I mean, the city of Union has a historic district and Baker has a historic district and and so these consultants do that kind of work everywhere. And so it's not it's not like uh we're going to end up with a uh historic district standard uh code that looks like Salem's where it's a hundred and some pages long and it is and you and I don't know, you probably need a team of folks to probably interpret and administer that. And so um I'm I'm expecting uh that that we'll go out and we'll look for a consultant that has experience in working with uh rural communities like ours and and can develop a fairly comprehensive set of codes that that we can administer locally in that as we hand that code to contractors and property owners, they'll be able to read through it, interpret it and understand it without having us have to interpret everything for them. And so that that's that's the goal. And uh so hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you.
Dave, go ahead.
So so Mike, I've got a couple of questions for you. Number one is that we had asked uh you to find out whether applying for this grant, if we don't accept it because there's a there's a timeline on these grants. I think it's in every other year or every, you know, something like that. If we decline this grant, are we, I I think we'd ask you to find out if we if if that then precludes us reapplying for another grant next year for something, say, directly related to historic preservation of a building or something along those lines.
Um, it does not. So if we decide to decline this grant, uh I could apply again next year. Um, I mean, the risk we run is that we'll hopefully be out of COVID. There might be a lot more people applying and or there may be less funding available and and this project may not be uh you know, something that uh yeah, you know, would qualify or or we wouldn't get enough money in order to actually do what we want to do. So that that's a risk we run that it's kind of a gamble. But uh but yeah, there's um there's there's no, I guess downside on the application side if we choose to uh pass this up.
And then a a follow-up question there. So um I I expressed in the earlier uh uh meeting this year my concerns that, you know, we're dealing with uh what eighteen, twenty-page document that we have. I think it was included in the council packet today. Um, and I I I took some issue in that we weren't provided with any specific guidelines that have been troublesome. Uh, you know, so we've been told that it's it's troublesome, it's problematic. But when I when I asked the Landmarks Commission to, you know, can we identify a couple of these that are that are troublesome? Um, I there wasn't a lot of feedback on identification of specific items that that have been in issue and and I think, okay, so uh I I also was hoping that maybe you've you've had any some contact with SHPO. Um, when I called them, I think there's two directors there. I spoke with one of them. Uh, the director there seemed to feel like it was very appropriate for a city of our size to largely use the template that they have provided for the state of Oregon, um for communities like ours uh as as a a very sound and solid template that puts us in line with all of the state uh legal guidelines. Uh, that comes to us as a city at no cost. Um, uh and then we are left to shape that as we wish to suit our own needs here. Uh, he also said that because of our status in the state of Oregon as a city that um we have uh essentially free consulting uh privileges with the state uh Historic Preservation Office. Uh, and and he seemed very eager to help us out with that. So I I'm curious, I mean, uh because my concern is, I've I've taken a look at Salem's. Salem's is a two hundred and fifty-five page document. It's horrendous. And and I worry that um, you know, we may, we may get uh, we may get what we pay for. We may get a a very large unwieldy document that results from this um that is less flexible, less suitable to a small town like we are. Um, so I I guess the the next question then is, have you spoken at all with representatives from SHPO uh in recent months about what they can offer us uh that would be an alternative to hiring a a consultant in this way?
Yeah, and so so I think there's a there's a couple of things here. So uh the first thing is the representative that you spoke with. I think he's just a like a department head or or so uh the actual director is who approved the grant, uh and that's Curry Gill. Uh but um, there's two documents that uh I think may be confused. And so the state has what they call a model code or a model ordinance. And we're not looking, we already have that built into our land development code. That model code talks about how you establish a commission, what the role of the commission is and their decision-making authority, how often they meet, what the commission makeup is, uh how you process a project that if somebody's asking for demolition, uh you know, or putting something on the national registered listing. Now, you know, and and what all of that looks like. And so we already have that in our land development code. And um and that, I think, is the document that um he might have understood you were thinking about or discussing. Um, because that model code is something that we could just take that and kind of reshape it into into ours fairly easy. Um, and uh and ours actually, you know, looks very similar to that anyway. And so the other document we're looking at is specific to our downtown historic district standards and it's it's unique to our community. And there's really no model that we could take from the state and make our own because every community has their own history. You know, based on you know, what what's your town made up of and you know, what is your uh, you know, what era was your downtown uh constructed in and and uh and your period of significance. And and so uh so there's these two separate documents and for us, it's that historic district standards. It's that separate document that is important. And and I can assure you that our commission does not want a two hundred and some page document like Salem's because we have looked at that in the past and thinking, oh, we can take some stuff from that because that's pretty robust. And we there's probably some great ideas in there and and we just got lost. We can't, we couldn't even navigate that ourselves. They even tried to plagiarize and and steal something out of it without overcomplicating our own stuff. And so um our, I anticipate that our document might end up being about twice the size as it is now. And it's and and that increase in size is most likely going to be because we want to differentiate between the four different types of of historic buildings that we have and treat them differently. And so there may be four completely separate sections. And how do you deal with a building of this type? And what are your standards or guidance on on dealing with that? And so we may have four sections, which is going to cause the document to be bigger. But on the other hand, that's going to be easier because somebody comes in with a project and they go, oh, I have a building that's been significantly altered. I could just grab that chapter out of that stand uh that set of standards and here's your eight pages or your ten pages rather than giving them a whole fifty-page uh document. So so that's what I anticipated being bigger than what we have, but certainly it's got to be clear. I I don't, I don't even know how we're even going to deal with it if it's something that's going to be as mucky as Salem's. Uh, because I don't even know how staff would, I mean, I don't even know how their staff manages it. So um and then the the answer your question on the uh State Historic Preservation Office's staff and their ability to help us. They, we do have free service and they are, you know, more than happy to provide us guidance. The the challenge that we have is there's only, I think, three or four of them. And they serve the entire state. And so when we when we need guidance from them, sometimes we get um you know, you'll get service over the phone and here's my comments and you kind of get a markup or something. And sometimes it takes a couple of weeks or a month to even get that back because they're they're overwhelmed. Um, but I I I don't think for doing this level of a project, I don't know if we would get the service from them that we would hope for. Now, because we would be asking a lot of them. And uh um and it's not, and it's not, you know, being a consultant is not the service they offer. They're they're there to provide guidance when we get into trouble or we need and we need some interpretation of systems or procedural advice. And and that's really what they're there for, not so much to write our code for us. So.
So Mike, and I I Dave had some some good points there. Um do has the has the Landmarks Commission looked at the 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 guidelines and standards that uh SHPO already has in place for communities of our size? And and is that not something they would be willing to support? Or is it more important for us to have standards for the four different kind of buildings um that we have out there? I mean, some of this could be um you know, could could make your job easier, uh obviously, if you had um um more sort of divided out uh or separated standards for the four types of buildings. But on the other hand, if there's something that's out there that would work for us, um, it it seems like you know, I e- even though it's only ten thousand in cash and another fifteen hundred in in kind, um you know, that's money we could put to something else. Anyway, um, standards that exist, would they work? Or are we better off having a a set of four for the buildings that we have?
Yeah, and so so I guess just to kind of go back and so this this goes back to the two types of documents that that we have. And so uh the state does not have um a set of historic district uh standards that we would uh essentially use for our downtown and we would just kind of um I guess tweak it a little bit and and change it to kind of fit us. What what they have is a model ordinance that um is essentially how how do you establish your commission? How does your commission operate? How do they make decisions? Um, creating a chairperson, vice chair, all the stuff that we currently do. So we already have that ordinance in place and and ours is fairly good and we're not looking to change that. But but that's that's what the state would give us. Um, and then as far as the historic district standards, what they've done in the past and what they would do again is is they don't have anything that they created. They would refer us to which they where they've already done and it's overwhelming, but they refer you to Salem and they refer you to Portland and they refer you to all these communities where they have standards that we can take ideas from and and make them our own. And that that is an overwhelming task and it's it's just something that is way over our head for us to to do a start over and and that's that's why we're looking for a consultant to do that for us. Um, and and we fully anticipate having those four different types of historic buildings kind of sorted out so that we can uh treat them differently and and more appropriately rather than trying to treat them all the same.
Okay, there. I see Mary Ann has uh has her hand up again, so.
Mike, have you looked at any other cities that are similar to our size that might have the same issues that we do? With the four different types of buildings, I can't believe that we're the only one. We're not unique that way. So could we not look at theirs to see what they have? Before we
Yeah, we certainly could and and we have looked at other jurisdictions and and some cities uh do a better job than we currently do in our code. And uh as we go through this process, uh uh I I guess the the real issue is that this is too big of a task for for staff in our commission to tackle because we're essentially doing a rewrite. And it's going to take a lot of time and effort and you know, and frankly, it's going to take some professional expertise in historic preservation to do it right and do it right the first time. Um, and so while we certainly could take a stab at it, but then we're going to probably next year, we're going to take a stab at it again and the year after that, take a stab at it again. It'll be one of these forever evolving documents that we just have to hope we get right every time. And it's probably not going to have the community buy-in that we want and we're probably not going to be happy with it. And so um you know, and so that's why we wanted, we want a consultant to do this and I and I can guarantee that they're going to be looking at Baker Cities and Pendletons and and all of the other rural communities that have historic districts and and comparing those standards to our community, uh taking what they can out of them and they they'll probably even have some new ideas from other states as well that uh you know, we didn't even think of that, uh you know, might be great ideas for us to improve our process um and make it better.
Okay, anything else? For Mike? Council discussion? Conversation beyond uh the questions that Mike answered? I remember this, the last, um, it was a work session we had on this. Um, there was quite a bit of conversation about the standards and the guidelines and whether or not it should be consulted or done in-house, so. Nicole?
I'll just quickly chime in and say that I I've looked at the document we have. Um, in the past, I've had conversations with Mike about this and I actually do some work with one of my classes in public history around this document and I understand what you mean, Dave, when you sort of want examples. It's, I also think it's a little bit fraught because you don't want to just trot out examples of people who were not happy with the process and sort of publicly parade them across the stage. Um but in my relatively short time on council and probably Gary and Mary Ann can speak to this better because they've had more terms, but there have been cases where I think you know, the language is opaque or a little bit squishy. And so fixing that seems really important to me. But beyond that, I think Mike's right that there's just a lot of um technical stuff about this that you just sort of know, you have to know historic preservation to be able to make it work. And so I I think he's really just saying that staff time um can't just get sunk into this and ask the commission, which is a bunch of volunteers to do it, is probably not feasible as well. So I I I support this. I know it's a lot. Um, but we're getting a match that's going to, you know, slightly more than double what we're putting in. So it seems worthwhile, especially if we can make the process easier for people doing work within the district, which I think is the end goal here.
All right, thanks for that, Nicole. Anyone else?
Well, I think, Nicole, I think you're right. As long as we get a document that is not going to be too cumbersome that everybody will be able to understand. And that's kind of what I'm afraid of because I I see consultants coming in and they have a grandiose idea of what they think we should be rather than what we are. And that bothers me too. I don't want to get I don't want us to get tied to some standards that are not appropriate for our city.
And and Mary Ann, that's a a good question and and I throw it back to Mike. Um how do we prevent? Or how do we work with the consultants to get what we need rather than what they think we need? Uh and I I really I I don't want to see us have, you know, a two-hundred-page set of standards. Um, so how do we, how do we work with them to make that clear?
Yeah, and so I I I I'm not at all concerned about that issue myself. And so the the reason why is because the uh um, the state standards are very broad. And and they have not gone to the level that the planning side of the state has gone where they essentially establish goals and policies at a state level and impose those on the smaller communities. Um, the historic stuff is very unique to every community. It's based on your own history. It's based on the culture in your community. And the standards for historic preservation in your community is is unique to every community, which is why a a consultant needs to do this for us. And the other thing that helps us with that is that the state is not hiring the consultant for us. They're not hiring and managing the consultant. We are going out, we're putting together the RFQ. We're gonna we're gonna identify the consultants, kind of weed through them, pick the one that we feel is best suited for us. And it's our project. We're in the driver's seat the entire time. The state's not in the driver's seat at all. And and all the state cares about is that we finish the project. They don't you know, if we ask them for input, they'll provide it, but they're not going to micromanage and meddle in our process because that's that's not how the State Historic Preservation Office works. Unlike some of the other agencies that we work with that are deeply ingrained in the process and they steer the process for us. Um, and so that this process, this this particular grant and agency Um, and so that this process, this, this particular grant and agency is different. And so I'm, I'm very optimistic and positive that we're gonna end up with a good product.
Okay. Um, I see Dave and Gary. Um, I, I, I'm hesitant to, to, to say this one, but I'll let Gary go first. Age before beauty.
I think David was up before me anyway.
Okay. Well, then you can, you can, you can, you can, yeah, go ahead.
You want me to go ahead?
Go ahead, Gary.
Okay, here comes a little age. Um, I think my question really is just another version of yours. Uh, I feel pretty confident that we're not going to get a 200-plus page document. But as I've listened to this discussion, it kind of strikes me that we really aren't quite sure what we are going to get in terms of length, complexity, uh, you know, ha- have we seen examples of? Well, I guess we don't. Have we seen examples of who we think will be doing the consulting work? You know, I'm still, quite frankly, not sold on this thing. We, we don't really know what we're going to be getting, it strikes me.
Well, and I, and I don't think that we want to make that decision right now because part of it is we need to go through the public process and, and see what the public wants. Because I think the, the more clarity that the public asks for, the, the longer the document may become. And so it's, it's, it's really going to come down to the public process and what, uh, what our community supports and what they want for the downtown and what their vision is. And I, I would like to just see our document be 20, 30 pages and be done. But I don't know if that's realistic because I don't know if we're going to be able to address the community needs and something like that. And the process will determine that, I think, as we go through it.
Dave, go ahead.
So Mike, I was hoping you'd give me better assurance than you just did because again, I mean, I'm not opposed to, to doing this and I can get on board with this, but I want some assurance that we're not going to end up with some bulky document. That's what I need, um, to, 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 to get me on board with this. And, um, honestly, I'm not opposed to saying we're going to put a page limit on it, you know? Our, our end goal is to have a document that fits within this page guideline. Because I have in mind every contractor, every person who owns one of these buildings who wants to do a modification or construction, they have to at some point go through and read these standards and familiarize themselves with it. And the current document we have, you can sit down and you can read through it and get a very good understanding of it in under half an hour. And I don't want to end up with something that is so detailed and nitpicky and burdensome that we're going to ask every contractor to sit there and, and have to, have to work through this historic language and figure out what they have to do. And, and you see the point I'm trying to make, that, I mean, that, that, that can absolutely hamstring a project doing that. And, and you can, you can run into errors on the other side. Right now, it sounds like most of our errors are coming because there's not, there's insufficient clarification or there's an insufficient division between the building types. And I agree with you. It's a problem that we have new buildings downtown that are being held to the same standards as some historic ones. That's a problem and it's one we need to address. I just want some assurance that in addressing it in this fashion, we're not going to end up with something that is not a flexible document that really represents what we're trying to do here. So, so I, I don't know. I mean, is it, is it, is it feasible that we can stick a page number on this? And say, this thing's going to be under X amount of pages or, or, or is that just a bad idea? Because maybe we can't, you know, maybe the process goes on, we end up with something wrong.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I would caution against actually putting a page threshold on it. But I, I think the process is going to determine how long the document is. Um, but I could assure you that the landmarks commission and my focus is to make this document as short as, and concise as, concise as possible and easy to use and interpret. And that it's going to be general enough and flexible enough that every project that comes through the door, because everyone is unique, that we're going to be able to look at the document, we're going to be able to make a consistent interpretation that's fair to, to everybody. And what I would envision is a contractor is going to come in on a project. He's going to have a specific building that, um, is, is one of those four classifications. And I'll just pull out the, the pages in that document that are going to apply, and maybe he's going to get a 10-page handout. And, and he's not going to get the full 50. If it ends up being 60 pages because there's extra little background language in there or some definitions or something, um, you know, it just is what it is. But they would end up getting their five or 15 pages or whatever it is that's clear that applies just to their project. That's, that's what I envision. I, I want it to be short and concise and very usable. And, and if it's not, then I'm not going to be happy with it. And I would anticipate that you're going to hear that from the landmarks commission and that you're going to see it and you're not going to be happy with it either. And, and that's, that's problematic for me. And so, so my goal is to not have that be the result. And, and I'll, I'll be actively engaged in the process and so I'll, I'll be able to influence that. So.
Robert, you have, uh, your hand up there.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mayor, Council. And I, I very much appreciate the, the discussion. Um, a couple of times people mentioned, we're worried about the one-size-fits-all west-side consultant model. Um, I can tell you that the, uh, housing's, um, strategy exercise that, that we're just in the process of completing, some of the suggestions that were tossed out there were very much a one-size-fits-all, works-it-all, uh, areas. I think Mike did an outstanding job of guiding and directing the consultants. And those all ended up kind of in that back session, uh, section of, yeah, these were things that were talked about, but these just don't work here. So we're not even going to, um, move forward on any of them category. And so I, I share Mike's confidence in the ability to, to make sure that the consultants deliver what we're looking for, particularly since we're the ones driving the train as opposed to the state. If, if we were relying on the state's Historic Preservation Office to drive this train, I would have concerns. But the fact that we're selecting the consultant and Mike and the landmarks commission are going to be heavily involved in the process, you know, I don't, I don't think we're going to get, uh, something that's not going to be workable for us. And I, and I do think the key to this is that public involvement and buy-in piece. You know, several members of the council have sat through appeals on landmarks decisions. And you have heard the applicants stand at the podium and talk about the confusion about what they were being asked to do and that the standards are not clear. And you've heard from the landmarks commission the same thing. And, uh, you know, quite frankly, if, if we're not going to do, if we're not going to bring in a professional to try to, to help us rewrite these, my recommendation is we just leave them as they are and we just continue to live through with it. Because I don't think that it's a prudent use of our, our single-city planner resources to try to fix these. It's, it's, it's when, when taken in total with the other things that are on his plate to get done, um, this would move a ways down because of what the product would end up being. So, you know, I, I don't think that the answer to this is, well, we're going to try to do it on our own. We either need to do it and do it professionally and do it right, or we need to continue to live with what we have for the foreseeable future is kind of my two cents. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. That sounds, um, good discussion, good points brought up. Um, I kind of agree with Gary, with, uh, with Robert. Um, Mike's time is precious. He's already loaded up with enough things. Um, having, uh, having him rework these standards, uh, or these guidelines into standards, I don't think would be an effective use of his time. Um, if there are no more comments, uh, I will entertain a motion on this. Motion, anybody?
I will move that the city council approve the acceptance of the certified local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, Shippo contingent upon budget approval as presented.
Agreed.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion questions? Just a comment to say thanks, Mike. Um, you, you put together a good argument for, for making this thing happen. So. Um, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
No.
John Bozart, this absent excuse, David Glade?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Reluctantly, yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. Thank you. Uh, next item of new business is, uh, appointing, um, citizen to the parking, traffic safety and street maintenance advisory commission. Um, the commission, I, a- all commissions are seven members. I'm pretty sure unless, um, there's one out there that I'm not familiar with. Uh, this commission currently has four vacancies. Um, two of those vacancies are due to the expiration of a term and two are due to resignations. Um, the vacancy, uh, the appointment that I'll make this evening is for the remainder of a three-year term, which expires on December 31st, 2023. Uh, before I, uh, make the motion, um, I have a sort of, I have a question for Robert. Um, do we ever, do we ever follow up with, uh, commission members that have resigned? To find out why they resigned? Um, it would be interesting to know if they're, it, what's the reasoning behind people leaving commissions for, you know, or is it personal reasons? Are they busy? They got something else going on, leaving town? What? Do we do that?
At, at, at times we do. Uh, generally this, when someone's term is coming up to expire, we'll reach out to them and see if they're interested in continuing. A lot of time they will be relocating outside of the area. We don't have a formal process to do an exit interview to find out. Uh, and oftentimes when they, when they let us know they don't want to continue, they give us the reason at that time.
Okay. All right. It, I, you know, I, I, for me it was, well, okay, if we're losing people because of some particular reason, then maybe we can change, change things so that they, we're not losing people. Because we have a, uh, we have a number of vacancies on our commissions and, um, you know, they're important. Uh, as we just learned from Mike, uh, landmarks commission is, is doing some important stuff. And, and, and we need citizen involvement in these things. Uh, because we all don't necessarily have the time to be up on all of these commissions and what they're doing. Um, so with that, I move that, uh, Rod Sands be appointed to the Parking, Traffic Safety and Street Maintenance Advisory Commission, the remainder of a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2023.
Sorry.
All right. Uh, council discussion. Uh, all, all I'll say is it's nice to see Rod back on, on, uh, city commission. Um, I really valued it, his, his participation in the budget committee. Um, and it's good to see him back on one of the other commissions. So I appreciate that. Well, with that, I will, uh, uh, call for a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart, this absent excuse, David Glade?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on now in the agenda, uh, we have Commissioner Scarfo with us this evening. Uh, Commissioner, any, any comments?
Yes, I do have some updates. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, COVID-wise, we are still in the low-risk category. I don't know if everyone has heard that the state has triggered the metrics that I spoke to you guys about last month. And that initiates the extreme risk category. There were 15 ca- uh, counties that qualified for extreme risk last week and they, the restaurants and gyms had to shut down. Three more were added to that on Tuesday, so a total of 18. So it's more than half of the state was to, uh, go to extreme risk for this Friday. But miraculously, uh, we disengage extreme risk in the metrics that the governor introduced to us by now being under 15% increase in, uh, in cases. So good news for half the state. They get to, uh, o- remain open or open this Friday. Uh, we, we're doing very well, knock on wood. We have four, uh, four cases this week, 15 cases this period. So very optimistic that we will stay in low risk. Hopefully it stays that way. Uh, moving on to vaccines, I just got the phone with Carrie Brighidi prior to this meeting. We have 8,105 Union County residents that have had at least one vaccine shot. Uh, some of them are two, which, uh, kind of percentage-wise is around 40% of our population, which is very good compared to a lot of the other, uh, counties in the state. Uh, they did a vaccine clinic, a health EOU to a vaccine clinic yesterday. Over 100 vaccines were emitted. Uh, yesterday, there's a vaccine clinic tomorrow and there are 300 people sign up for that one. I don't know if it's because we have the Pfizer vaccine, which the Pfizer vaccine, uh, allows 16 years, uh, or older to have it. And rumor has it even next week they'll go down to 12, but I, I don't want to throw that. Uh, we're not sure yet. I don't want 12-year-olds getting in line just yet. So, uh, Friday's clinic is still, there's some open vac- uh, vacancies for that. But it's the Moderna, the Moderna vaccine on Fridays. Uh, Carrie Brighidi said she will be trying to get some more of the Pfizer vaccines for next week. Uh, the other places you can get the vaccines, still, uh, Safeway, Buy Mart, Rite Aid and Walmart. And I believe Buy Mart will come out to your car and vaccinate you in your car. So a little update for the vaccines on that. Uh, going to ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, still have not received money nor the instructions on how to spend said money. But our legislators have received some funding. Our senators have received each $4 million for their district and each representative, $2 million for their district. But was speaking with Senator Hansel, he has spent his $4 million and, uh, we, we weren't on that list. Um, but Rep Levy spent $1 million of it already, but then is going to allow us to have, uh, split the rest with Willawa County. So we're going to have $500,000 coming our way. And this morning in our commission meeting, the commissioners, I had to recuse myself because of the topic. They decided to spend the $500,000 for business support. Just like we've, uh, gave out the funding last time, I believe we're, they, I'm sorry, they will decide on, on how this funding will come out. But Rep Levy has received that notification about the business support where we want that money to go. And she will send that off to, I don't know if it's Ways and Means or the governor's office to have that approved. Do not know when that, that funding will come, but I do know it doesn't need to be spent, spent right away. And so we have time to, I'm sorry, they will have time to decide how to allocate that money. Uh, we, uh, they did try to, they submitted the ask of 850,000. Population-wise, it's an 80/20 split, uh, between Willawa County and Union County. But that didn't work with Rep Levy. She said, no, 50/50. So they did try for some more than 500,000. But as for that, there is, uh, legislation does end the, uh, the regular session ends, uh, next, end of next month. And bills are still going and, uh, back and forth. We do have a couple of projects in Ways and Means. One of them is the Fairgrounds Sewer Project with the city. I don't know if, uh, you've heard about this. I've talked with Director Carpenter about it a little bit. Uh, that we're going to try to get a pump station and a- access the city water and sewer to the fairgrounds to have that more functional for maybe emergency situations and, and the like. So, uh, yeah, fingers crossed on that. There are a couple of asks out there, but Rep Levy's going to bat for us. I'm going to try to get Senator Hansel as well. Uh, the ask is for $2 million. It'll be, it'll be fantastic to have water and sewer available for the fairgrounds in case of another emergency situation. And that's about it. If there's any questions, I'll love to hear them.
Any, any questions for Commissioner Scarfo?
Great.
I do want to thank Matt because, um, whenever I, whenever I've had questions for him, he's, he's right there and answering them. I appreciate having him around and, uh, and his connection with the county. So, uh, thanks, Matt.
At, at, anytime, give me a call.
Okay. Excellent. Um, staff comments? City manager comments?
I just noticed that Mary Ann had her hand up for a second. Mary Ann?
I just noticed that Mary Ann had her hand up for a second. Mary Ann, did you have a question?
I, I did have a question for Matt. Is he gone though?
Oh, I'm back.
Um, did you ever hear from the, from the governor about whether Union County could take control of their own discussion of, or their own um, whatever you were asking for, where you would have the total discussion?
In, in a way, it wasn't directly. There, there are multiple letters that went out asking for uh local control. And especially with us hitting the, the metrics to go to extreme, it really sparked statewide. She received a lot of different letters and pretty much responded the same way, oh, no. Where she's going to continue with control. I know if you, you saw that she extended the, her emergency uh uh with a guidance to another sixty, sixty days. And so we're still following these risk levels uh under her emergency situation. She still said she's trying to unravel the seventy-one executive orders that she, she put into place. I don't know how long that takes. Uh, but just, we're just waiting now. But hey, our, our numbers are doing fantastic. She did say that, I mean, I did have a quote here from her, from her uh press conference with uh, this is direct quote from Governor Brown with Oregonians continuing to get vaccinated each week, my expectation is that we will not return to extreme risk again for the duration of this pandemic. But uh, oh, that was what she said. So hopefully we don't and hopefully they do become advisory. And we can handle, handle this ourselves.
Did she give you a clue of why the counties could not take control of their own county?
No, I'd love to, love to know that answer too. Like the example I gave you guys last month about our little outbreak in Elgin were just numbers. They don't, they didn't know that we had it under control.
Yeah. Gary, go ahead.
I would comment, yeah, I think the most important thing at this point is that we remain in a low risk.
Yes.
Whatever requirements may be, we're where we need to be at this point.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And whatever Union County is doing right now, and we're, we're doing a fantastic job. I've talked to other commissioners in other counties and they're blowing up all over the place. I, they don't know where, why. Uh, contact tracing is very difficult. No one's giving out where they've been. It's, it's getting, it's getting to the, the point. You know, I see a lot of constituents just, they don't, their, their care factor maybe get gone a little bit or a lot.
Yeah.
But we're, hey, we're, hey, we're doing great here in Union County. So low risk, let's stay there.
Yeah, we, we are. And, and um, I think that, Matt and I talked about this a little bit. While there are documented percentage of people who had COVID is around five or six percent. Um, we've got forty percent, if that's the number that Matt is using for, for vaccinations. Um, my guess is that undocumented cases are probably two or three times what the documented cases are. With that numbers, we're pushing, we're pushing sixty to seventy percent of the people in the county have, have been either vaccinated or infected. I don't know, that's the number I've heard for herd immunity. So maybe the county has reached, is reaching a point where it's just not people are just not getting it because they've either had it or they're vaccinated. I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not going to make any claims of that fact, but um I think it's, it's a good possibility that we're reaching that and that, that would not, that would be, that would be a good thing for us in terms of staying at low. So. Anything else from Matt? Any other questions? I don't see anybody else's hands up. Okay, sorry, I missed you, Mary Ann, on that, on that one. Um, back to city staff, uh, staff comments. We had no staff comments. Uh, city manager comments?
Uh, we do have a little bit of business to take care of starting next Monday night.
Oh, yeah.
Budget hearings. Uh, you're all invited. Well, Matt's not invited, but he can watch if he wants. So uh you should all have memorized your uh budget in preparation for a Monday. We'll start off with the Urban Renewal Agency and then uh transition into review of the other budgets. Uh, public comments, uh, we're asking that people submit them in writing in advance uh so we can provide those. And I have been getting uh some uh written comments in that we'll share with you at the appropriate time during the uh hearings. You should have received the monthly report for April, the sent out, sent that out to the council by email. Uh, again, uh, if you kind of glance for the red and the blue, that's the completed and the items with updates as opposed to having to read all hundred and some items, uh, kind of focus on those. Uh, the other thing is, it's my understanding, I haven't, I haven't seen them, but uh the OSHA rules related to COVID uh were set to expire, but they have made them semi-permanent rules. So those are things like required social distancing in the workplace and that sort of thing. Uh, those temporary rules were set to expire, but it's my understanding that they've made them permanent. Uh, so those are all things that we, we're going to have to continue to uh take into account as an employer uh with the city and as we move forward with, with what to do next. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm going to lead off with, Robert, go ahead, Mary Ann.
Robert, does that include people who have had the vaccine then? I mean, because why should they have to be keeping the distance and so forth? I mean, I understood that that was to take care of that.
So whatever, whatever rules that OSHA, the state of Oregon's OSHA puts out or what we have to follow, sort of, and again, I haven't seen them. I, I did not see anything in, in what the draft was that identified in the workplace what to do with people that have been vaccinated versus not. Um, so I just wanted to make you aware that they have made those rules permanent. There was some discussion around, you know, all these rules are going to expire and then we don't have to, to, to do things anymore, but they did make them permanent. And they can always go back in and, and change them. But I just wanted to, to make people aware that, that, that has happened. Uh, and we'll take a look at what those are.
Right. Anything else? Okay, uh, I'm going to lead off with council comments. Uh, I don't normally read uh every proclamation that comes across uh to me, but um this one in particular has sort of personal meaning. My uh, my father, when he was alive, was an active member of the PFW and um and the, the poppy month uh and the poppy distribution. So this one has sort of a personal uh, a personal edge for me. So, uh, whereas the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the Memorial Poppy and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary adopted the Buddy Poppy as their memorial flowers. And whereas Poppy Days contributes, contributions are used solely for rehabilitation and child welfare programs in our community and state. Now, therefore, I, Stephen E. Clements, Mayor of the City of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty-one as Poppy Month and May twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second as Poppy Days in our city. And urge all citizens to join with me in wearing the Memorial and Buddy Poppies as together we remember the sacrifices of so many in defense of our freedom. So I, we have a proclamation. I appreciate that. Um, I don't know, last year, I don't know that they were handing out poppies, but um uh, they used to do it in front of uh, in front of Safeway and most of the other commercial buildings. Perhaps they'll get back to it this year. I don't have any other comments. Um, so I'll turn it over. I'm just going to read across the screen in my order. So, uh, Justin, anything?
No, I'm doing good.
Nicole?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Okay, Dave? Okay, um, before we wrap this up, I um, we, we, we.
You forgot Gary.
Yeah, Gary, sorry. He's down the bottom. He, his, his screen moved. So go ahead, Gary, anything?
Well, I, I don't have anything. It would take more than an hour.
Oh, okay. We're, we're, we're listening.
Fine.
Okay, um, I just asked council uh to, to, to keep John and Janice in your thoughts. Um, the tragedy that they've experienced in losing their daughter, uh, is something I think that we can all personally relate to. Uh, having children of our own. Um, it's a very sad affair to know that, that they've, they've got to go through this. My heart goes out to both of them for uh, for what they're going through. Um, and with that, I'll adjourn our meeting and we will see you all uh next Monday night. Take care.